Moving on to item three, 415 20th Street. This is a proposal for a new office building, office tower in the Central Business District. And the planner for this project is Rebecca Lind. And I might point out, because we have received some letters about the address, that the APN is included in the project description as well and in the case file information. So if anyone has any confusion about where this is located, the APN is the correct location for the project. And with that, Rebecca Lind does have a presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Excuse me, I clear my voice here. I've been listening intently, not speaking. So good afternoon. We are asking the commission this afternoon to have this public hearing to consider the proposed development at 415 20th Street. There are four discretionary permits before you this afternoon. First is design review, also a major conditional use permit and two variances to the maximum setback. I'm going to briefly go over why, how those discretionary, how we can meet the findings for those discretionary permits for this project. There is detailed information in the staff report. I'm just going to provide a summary. There are a lot of issues and it's a large building. So first of all, design review. This building meets our design standards for a tower in the CBD zone with respect to height, bulk, and massing for street activation and the building design. It has 862,048 square feet of office floor area and a maximum height of 623 feet. Design review findings can be made because this 38-story tower has an interesting design that adds to the interest of the downtown with dominant structural elements forming an X pattern. The applicant will be giving a presentation, so you can experience the design there. But it has an interesting facade that's integrated throughout. The building's support elements are expressed on the exterior. They come down to the street on all the facades. There are amenities provided on three levels, the ground floor, the top of the parking podium, and the observation tower. Those elements help create a visual break that is one of the things that our design guidelines call for in the downtown. So the tower is also narrower above the podium, which meets our upper-story massing standards. There is some differentiation between the base and the middle of the building, which complies also with our standards. And we have an exterior resist plaza that creates a corner element at 20th and Franklin Streets and also creates active ground space, excuse me, active ground floor, street activity. This project was reviewed by the DRC and a recommendation was made to forward to the planning commission. The DRC did make some changes, which are incorporated in the project design. So moving on to the major conditional use permit. This permit is triggered by the size and the height of the tower. There are a number of early review issues that have been addressed throughout the project design and comments from the public concerning design and operating characteristics of the project, transportation issues, shadow, wind, bird fly, construction management, and community involvement. When the project was before the design review committee, the committee requested additional public involvement, which the applicant provided, and I'm hoping they will address that in more detail. We have received two letters of support, which were forwarded to the commission, two letters of opposition, also addressed to the commission, and one general comment, neither pro or con, but offering comment. We have found that the findings for conditional use permit can be made for this project. This is documented in detail in attachment A. But in general and in sort of summary form, the project is consistent with the general plan vision for the downtown, which is a particularly important point because of the mass and scale of this building. It would become the tallest building upon construction. The location at 19, adjacent to the 19th Street Bart Station is prioritized in the general plan for high-intensity office development, which is telling us that both the land use plan and the zoning are anticipating this kind of height mass at this location. The project is an appropriate fit in this downtown location, also because it facilitates a transit-oriented development that encourages workers to use alternate modes of transportation. This information is documented in the transportation analysis, which you can find in the appendix. But we are anticipating up to 50% transit ridership for a project of this type. The project height and mass will not create shadow impacts on historic resources or create wind impacts as condition. There is an eight-foot-high windscreen on the parking podium on the sixth floor as it faces 20th Street, and that's shown in the project plans on page 16. And I'm going to ask the applicant to point that out when they do their presentation. That is recommended as a site-specific condition of approval. There was quite a lot of discussion about the top of the building, both from the aesthetic point of view and also for the bird-flyway design requirements, which we do address through our standard conditions of approval. The design review committee did make some modifications to the building crown, adding some city lighting to address that bird-flyway issue. And then for project management, we have standard conditions of approval that address project management. This is of concern to citizens in the area, and you have received some comments about that in the comment letters. So moving on to the minor variances. I'm going to explain this a little bit because they're not really intuitive. The maximum setback requires two vari, the, we're requiring, this project, excuse me, not explaining it well. This project requires two variances of the maximum setback. One is in the vertical plane and the other is in the horizontal plane. So on the vertical plane, it's most apparent when you look at the plaza at the corner of Franklin and 20th Street. What the design shows you is some large pillars that do come down to the ground level at the maximum setback of five feet. But they do not have a continuous building wall. They are open going into the interior of the plaza, and that does not comply with the requirements of the code. So the first maximum setback variance is to allow the actual building wall at a maximum of up to 33 feet on the 20th Street side and 13 feet on the Franklin Street side in order to have the continuity of the design around that corner. The second variance is for the vertical plane. The code regulates the maximum setback within the first two or second or third story of a building up to a height of 35 feet. And in this case, because of the same situation with the pillars, the actual building wall occurs at the rear of the plaza and extends vertically approximately 32 feet to create an open and large volume of entry space that forms that corner element at 20th and Franklin. And we have provided the findings for both of those variances in attachment A. For the environmental review, the sequel compliance for this project is an exemption analysis provided by tearing off of the 1998 Land Use Transportation Element EIR and also the 2011 Central District Urban Renewal Plan EIR and by springing provisions from the Public Resources Code and Sequel Guidelines. That documentation is provided in the staff report on pages eight and nine. And the full analysis is included as attachment D. That is the full environmental analysis. So in conclusion, I believe the project is well-designed. It implements an emerging compact urban center in the downtown. And findings can be made for the major conditional use permit and variances as needed to result in a high-quality project. So the recommendation is to affirm staff's environmental determination and to approve the design review, the conditional use permit, and variances of the maximum setback standards. And that's the end of the presentation. I'm available for questions. And the applicant, Kevin Chow of Heinz Development, is available for a presentation. He has also members of his team available for questions. So that's the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any immediate questions for staff? Oh, okay. Let's, oh, Commissioner Man, sorry.
Rebecca, can you just share with us the issue, if there are any issues, on any of the wind levels on pedestrian comfort ground level? I know you touched on that. And whatever design mitigations have been incorporated, if there are issues on that, because I did look through that.
Yes, and for your reference, the detailed wind analysis is in the appendix. It is in an appendix to the appendix to the attachment D because it's part of the environmental review. And there are diagrams and tables that explain the results of the wind tunnel analysis. So in this particular case, the project is required to implement a design solution to a potential wind impact that was identified through wind tunnel testing by the subconsultant for environmental review. And there is no street-level impact identified. The impact was on the sixth floor at the parking podium. Now, that is an area that will be a proposed public access park with elevator access to the public. And a 10-foot wind wall is proposed as a solution at that location. And I will ask the applicant to point that out as they go through their presentation. So we reviewed that with the wind consultant. And the specifics of that design will need to be reviewed at the time of the building.
Thank you, Rebecca. I'm sure Kevin will touch on that as well.
Great. So please, please proceed, Kevin.
Great. Thank you, commissioners. Desmond, similar to DRC, if it's possible, can you please elevate Paul Parity as well as John Picard?
Absolutely.
Once again, thank you, everyone, for your time this afternoon. My name is Kevin Chow. And on behalf of Heinz, you know, with a project applicant, and in the interest of time and not having too many speakers, I'm going to hand it over to our senior partner, Paul Parity, as well as John Picard, our architect, to walk through the presentation we have for you this afternoon.
Thanks, Kevin. Good afternoon, Chairman Lignon and planning commissioners. My name is Paul Parity, Senior Management Director with Heinz. Presenting with me is John Picard of Picard Schilden Architects. So today, we're going to describe our proposed office that intersects Franklin and Thomas L. Berkeley Way. To begin, I'd like to thank staff planner Rebecca Lind for her team and their careful and thoughtful coordination of this project. It's been great working with you, so thank you. This is a true Oakland project. It's right on the 19th Street Bart Station in the heart of Uptown. The public open spaces allow full enjoyment of the great Oakland weather. We're just a short walk to beautiful Lake Merritt. In Oakland, as you are aware, is very much in need of high-quality office space to continue attracting world-class employers, which this building will do. And of course, the building will be built 100% with union labor. And finally, it'll be a beautiful addition to the Oakland skyline. We feel great about the benefits to the community. We've created three terrific public open spaces, our piazza on the ground level, the elevated Uptown Park, and our Sky Terrace, all of which John will describe here in a minute in more detail. We are financially supporting the Lake Merritt Institute and their incredible efforts to keep the lake water clean. We have plentiful bike and scooter parking for the public. We will integrate public art into the project by local artists, and details on that will be, will come later. And we'll subsidize our retail to support local businesses. And along the way, we have energetically reached out to the public and addressed all of the feedback. We've even had the team go out and post flyers to augment the public noticing process. So at this time, let me introduce John Picard, and he'll describe the project in more detail. John?
I'm sorry, I'm looking for John's name. I don't see him. Would he be under a different name? Or, John, if you could raise your hand and I could find you on the attendees?
Desmond, could it potentially be under Benjamin Simmons?
Let's take a look.
It has probably been KHA.
Yep, that's the one. Thank you. Okay, John, are you there? If you can unmute yourself.
Oh, I think that's a, that's a different Ben, I believe.
Kevin, yeah, it is. It's been cleaner with Kendall Eaton.
Okay, let me see if we can get John and his team to just raise their hand.
Oh, Sabin, is that, I see something.
Sablon is with the Improvement District, I believe.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if he, yeah, if you could give us a name so we can identify. We're not seeing hands raised that correspond with a John or a Ben at all.
Okay.
Nobody else is raising their hand.
Is someone named Sung?
No.
No, let me, bear with me for a moment while I...
They're definitely here. We're contacting them. Sorry to confuse us here.
Yeah, and if you can just get their, even if you can get their Zoom name, their Zoom handle, that would be great, because we do have four hands raised.
What are the Zoom names that you have?
I have Xenafen, Barbara, Valvin, and Seon. And I do have some phone numbers, so maybe they might be a call-in person.
You have a 203, Eric Hurd?
Five-ten only, it looks like.
So I just spoke with the team. They are on the call. For some reason, you guys can't see their names, so they're logging off and logging right back on, so I apologize.
Let's get their phone number and Zoom name, Kevin.
Yes.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna lower the hands and so if that person could just raise their hand if they get on. And I do apologize, you will need to raise your hand again once the public comment period starts. So you do have normally a 15-minute presentation time, so just be mindful of your time as we are waiting for your third person.
Got it. Thank you.
We haven't seen any new participants join, but if you can let us know a name.
So, so Desmond, Ben Simmons, S-I-M-M-O-N-S, that he's back in and he's raised his hand.
I still have Ben KHA only. So I'm not sure what he's logging into.
So, yeah, they've indicated that they can see everything that's going on right now, so.
So they must have a different name that they're using as their Zoom handle. So if you could please get that Zoom handle name for us, that would help.
Will do. Thank you.
I have...
All right, I think it's under, is it Sean Ngung? I think that was the original one.
Okay. Go ahead and raise your hand again. And let's allow...
It's at the top.
Yeah, can you, can you speak?
Yeah, well, you're here. Can you hear us?
But I'm gonna call you to panelists right now, so give me one second. All right. You can now share your screen. Unmute it, you will need to unmute yourself again. There you are. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you.
We are here. Can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay. We apologize for that rather exciting introduction. You'd think by now, after hundreds of Zooms, that this system would work. But let me get to the point, and we'll make our presentation succinctly. I'll begin by simply saying how honored we are to be a part of the project. I think, as Paul mentioned, the project is really a positive outgrowth of a collaborative partnership, obviously with our client, Heinz. But I think in particular, we work side by side with Rebecca and the DRC, and we're particularly proud of the project that we have before you. Let's start with just an overview. I think you're, the commissioners are going to be quite familiar with the location at 20th and Franklin. Obviously, a project of this significance is very appropriate for the priority district, literally perched as it is above the 19th Street Bart. And you can see, you know, we're particularly excited about, it is in the heart of the growing vitality of Oakland and so very close to Lake Merritt, which is, we see as one of the great benefits for the project. You know, Rebecca mentioned that it's tall, and at over 600 feet, it certainly is. I think the thing that we are particularly proud of, though, is not necessarily the height, but rather the character, the dignity, the timeless quality of the architecture that I believe will speak to the vitality of Oakland for decades to come. Now, this view, just to say, is not a view that you'll often see. This is obviously up at about the 15th, 18th floor, but I think it does give you a sense of how the building will be positioned within the city. We spent a lot of time with the DRC looking at how the building will be seen to make sure that it was appropriate. And then here, you see it in a more conventional view. And I think one of the things that we'll talk about at length is how the building, it feels appropriate to Oakland. Also, Paul mentioned these three important public spaces, two of which you see very vividly in this view, what we call Uptown Park, which is at the base of our tower. It's marked by those kind of diagonal components. And then the Sky Terrace at the very apex of the tower. So the basic facts that Rebecca touched on, but there are three important spaces. There's the piazza, the Uptown Park, and then Sky Terrace. These are public spaces available to all citizens of Oakland. And I think one of the things that is critical for us is this will be a project which would be one of the first major office buildings coming on the heels of this tragedy we've all lived through. And so we're thinking of it as a next-generation office building. But one of the things that's very important as well is Oakland is in a, how should we say, challenging seismic zone. And we want the folks that work in the building to not just be safe, but to feel safe. And so part of the structural system that gives rigidity to this building is going to be expressed and becomes an important part in the character of the building that you see. And that's in those kind of the diagonals that are subtly expressed on the exterior of the building. And then the building comes down, and those diagonals make their way all the way to the ground. And this, of course, is a view at the corner of 20th and Franklin, showing the piazza, which we'll talk about in some detail here in a moment, and then Uptown Park. And then the zone in between is about 260 parking spaces that is available for, it's a private parking for the tenants in the building. Of course, as Rebecca mentioned, the vast majority of people coming here will be using mass transit park in particular. So this is the ground floor. And if we were designing this building in an earlier era, what you would have expected to see in lieu of what we are referring to as the piazza, the kind of yellow zone there on the corner of 20th and Franklin, that would be the lobby. And the glass would have come out, and it would have been right on the property line. And what would happen is the public would not have been welcomed into our project. And what Heinz wants to do is to allow the glass to be pulled back, as Rebecca mentioned, to allow the public to come in. Because if that glass wall is at the property line, no one would, unless you're wearing a fancy, you know, three-piece suit or something, you wouldn't be comfortable coming into that lobby. In this concept, what we've done is the building reaches out to the city and invites the city in. And we think it's the right thing for Oakland. It's also the right thing, frankly, for the tenants, because we see the piazza as a way to extend the vitality of that building. And we'll go through in great detail how we bring the piazza to life, how we carefully manage it. Important note while I'm on this drawing, though, you see those two elevators, they're marked in kind of yellow at the top. Those elevators will provide a direct public access to what we refer to as Uptown Park. You'll also see a significant number of parking spaces for the bikes and so forth. So, and then all of the services, you know, that are required to make the building are kind of tucked in the back. So in essence, we have vital, active street uses on both key public spaces of the project. And this diagram shows the little pink zones are retail, where at the moment, we're envisioning a coffee shop right on the piazza. And then another retail center up in Uptown Park, and then the glass-enclosed public elevators that will take you up to Uptown Park. And of course, this is just an artist conception of what that could be. Much refinement to come. But you can see, for instance, that there's a large kind of glass garage door that opens up to allow the cafe to interact with the piazza. There'll be comfortable places for everyone to sit, to work, Wi-Fi activated, beautiful lighting, and generous, generous amounts of landscape. One of the things that we're excited about is the Oakland climate is, from a perspective of a New Englander, is quite spectacular. And that's, in fact, what allows a space like this to really come to life and to be practical. And I think one of the things that's important to understand is for this space to be successful, it has to be thoughtfully managed. And I've had the pleasure of collaborating with Heinz for well over three decades, and I can tell you with total conviction that that's what Heinz does and does wonderfully. So we'll start with careful, thoughtful, sensitive security. There'll be active uses, dedicated food, beverage, retail carts, flower carts, programming. So the space will feel alive. It's the right thing for Oakland, and it's the right thing for the building. Here you see the base of the podium. We worked very carefully with the DRC to make sure that it was appropriate, thoughtfully detailed. The character of the building is going to be very rich. It's vertically dominant. You can see those large columns that soar up the top of the tower, and then the X-bracing that stabilizes the tower. And when you come up to Uptown Park, it's really, more than ever today, an exterior space is critical, not just for the public, but for the global tenants that we're attracting to this project. We all want to be outdoors. And what we're envisioning, there'll be a lawn for sort of public gatherings you see on the upper left. But there'll be places for exterior conference rooms that are thoughtfully buffered from the wind. Rebecca talked about the eight-foot windscreen. You can see that on the top of the screen in kind of blue. That windscreen, when we did our pedestrian wind analysis, we had uncomfortable winds. By adding that glass screen there, we made the winds extremely comfortable so people could spend most of their time on this beautiful park. Park is literally approaching three-quarters of an acre in size, and it'll be wonderfully landscaped by the office of James Burnett. And then you can see now, looking down, you've got the gathering lawn on the left, musical concerts and events, and then places, this is, this zone will receive southern light, so it's going to be quite marvelous. I think one of the things that I'm excited about is the dignity of the project. It soars, it's vertically dominant, and it's organized around, I'll call it classical principles of a base... of a base, a middle, and a top. And each component is very thoughtfully conceived. So, the base is rich, vital, inviting, Uptown Park, the same. And then finally, when the building meets the sky, there's a gorgeous crown that will be beautiful during the day, but it'll also be beautiful at night. And I think, to make it even more interesting, so often when tall buildings reach the sky, it's all about mechanical equipment, about cooling towers. And what is unique to this project is that the crown is actually a public gathering place. There will be human beings up there, there's lush landscape, there'll be fabulous views back over the city. And of course, behind this, the project would not be successful unless we could deliver to the most demanding global tenants the kind of workplace that they require. And they require maximum planning efficiency, they require an environment where their employees can achieve their full potential. And so, I'm not gonna get into too many details, but I can assure you that within the details, these floor plates are state-of-the-art. They would not have been done this way one year ago. Mechanical systems, you name it, it will truly attract to Oakland the best of the world's corporate leaders. And just to talk about a little bit about, what are the things that are a little different in this building than you might have seen a couple of years ago? Well, first of all, exterior space is so important. We spend our days on Zoom, assuming they work. And so, being able to get out, be on a conference call, not at your desk, and do a walk. And so, in the project, we've got two walking loops, one at the top of the tower, another at the Uptown Park, each an eighth of a mile in length. We've got something silly, washrooms, totally different than the washrooms that you know in a typical commercial office building. They're private, the sink, the water closet, all in one space, people are safe, mechanical systems, state-of-the-art. Again, these are things that will attract the finest to downtown Oakland. And that's great for the project, and it's great for the city. And then finally, here you see a detail of the crown, highly articulated. What you'll see during the day is you'll see the trees, the glass is being very carefully developed, so it's quite clear. You'll see at times the sky through it. We're working side by side with a very respected alien consultant to make sure that the project, in all respects, is gonna be respectful of the birds. And you can begin to see some of the detail, that's not just in the crown, but also in the tower. The tower is very thoughtfully detailed. It is the opposite of your conventional flush glass box. It's rich, it's articulate, there's lighting that's integrated into it, it's gonna be quite marvelous. And I think for me, what's most exciting is at the top of the tower, there'll be spaces that people will really wanna be a part of. So, this is at the kind of the south corner of the building, you're looking back to downtown Oakland, back to San Francisco. We've got a series of kind of amphitheater-style bleacher seating to look out with the landscape, and this would be a great place for people to come up and have their lunch or their cup of coffee. And so, at night, what happens is, instead of being this mute mechanical zone, the mechanical's all been carefully wrapped up, you get this wonderful park in the sky, or Sky Terrace. And what you're seeing there, these little white dots of light, we refer to as fireflies, we're working with a very respected lighting consultant, Quentin Thomas, to have a series of these lights that kind of float through space and bring animation to it. And of course, you'll not be surprised, all the lighting has been carefully designed to be respectful of the night sky. So, the building will have a presence, but it'll be a gentle presence and appropriate to our towers. And then here you see the project again, back from Lake Merritt, with those public spaces, very visible. And then finally, a building that I believe will truly stand for a next-generation office place, and in my opinion, makes Oakland become truly a world-class city. So, you have Oakland and San Francisco that begin this wonderful conversation, and the building will take its place, and hopefully, we'll be proud of it for decades to come. So, I will turn it back to the chair, and obviously, we're delighted to answer questions at the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you, Paul. So, if we have an immediate question for the applicant, I'm happy to take those, or we can just move forward with the public hearing. Okay, so we'll move on, I didn't open up the public hearing portion of this item.
Okay, it looks like we do have, of course, speakers for this item. The first speaker is Savlan Hauser, if you could unmute yourself to make your comment.
Thank you, Savlan Hauser, I'm speaking today as the Chair of the Oakland Bid Alliance, and just voicing support for this really exciting project, and just wanna speak to how important commercial uses like this, of office in particular, having employees and workers and meetings happen here in Oakland's downtown is so important to our small business community and activating our downtown neighborhoods. So, this is really exciting, and I also wanna just applaud the bottom floor for being so permeable and open to the work, wonderful neighborhood. And so, this is a really exciting project, and it shows the tremendous potential of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker, Barbara Leslie. Just one second. Okay, Barbara, you may unmute yourself to make your comment.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, good afternoon, the Chairperson Limone and members of the Commission. I am Barbara Leslie, CEO of the Oakland Chamber of Commerce and an Oakland resident. I'm here today speaking in support of the applicant for a proposed office tower at the corner of 20th and Franklin in downtown Oakland. I first became familiar with the project last year when the applicant reached out to leave the chamber on the proposal. We were so impressed that we invited representatives from Heinz to present at our economic summit last month to over 300 attendees. Suffice it to say, it was very well received. Although we acknowledge and appreciate the tremendous work to date by the developer to engage stakeholders, create a project that is consistent with existing land use policy, provide street activation and publicly accessible space, we are not the experts in the areas of mass, setbacks, and aesthetics. That is clearly the Commission's purview. For the chamber, it's about jobs and the businesses that create them. It's about jobs for our local workforce as a result of more businesses choosing Oakland, and it's about the multiplier effect of those jobs rippling through our local retail, restaurant, and small business community. We are acutely aware of what happens when we do not have a daytime workforce in downtown Oakland. The chamber has been intimately involved in the downtown planning process for the last few years, and the project addresses many of the key issues we have identified as critical for our economic sustainability. The project promotes downtown as a regional job center, it supports the balance of commercial development with existing housing stock, it provides a visually attractive development in the exact right location, where multiple transportation options. During our recent economic summit, the presenting economist was pretty bullish on Oakland's economic recovery, but we needed to be smart enough to take advantage of the opportunities that recovery presents. We are grateful for the boldness of this project and the confidence Heinz Development has in Oakland. The chamber shares that confidence as we work towards it in Oakland with a vibrant business community, a growing tax base, and a strong local workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next comment. Zunifan, you may unmute yourself to make your comment, and do please state your full name for the record.
My name is Zunifan Artis Abraham, I'm a 47-year resident of Oakland off Euclid and Palm Avenue. How's everybody doing? I am not specifically in objection of the project, but in its current configuration. At 864,000 square feet in size, using a multiplier of roughly 250 square feet per employee, that would translate to just over 3,400 employees, and add more pressure, or as some would call it gentrification pressures, to Oakland, which is already suffering and reeling from them. I'm not opposed to large structures by any means, what was once called the Sears Tower is my favorite, but that's another story. But the simple fact of the matter is, this structure that you're looking at reminds me of King Kong waiting for Godzilla to come and battle, which leads to the question, where's King Kong, where's Godzilla? It looks, in another photograph the developers provided, like it's wistfully staring at San Francisco. The best solution is live-work. If you want us to enjoy the park, let us live in the structure. It would absorb, to a great degree, the housing pressures that it's going to exact on Oakland anyway. It would create a magnificent city within a city, and new revenue opportunities that would allow the project even better pencil out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Naomi Schiff, you may unmute yourself to make your comment.
My first comment is on behalf of Oakland Heritage Alliance, that's Thomas L. Berkeley Way. And, you know, it's been there for 20 years, and it is time that we use it. Most people used to that name, I did check on Google and surrounding addresses, people are using Thomas L. Berkeley Way. Let's use that. There are lots of 20th Streets in this country, there aren't any other Thomas L. Berkeley Ways that I'm aware of. So, we'll give you a distinctive address, and also elucidate your respect for Oakland history and becoming part of the community. On my own behalf, I have a couple of other comments. One, walking loops inside, what do you need that for? Please, come out on the street in Oakland and patronize our businesses, walk in our parks, and do not isolate yourselves in your tower. We don't want that, we wanna see your faces on the street. And while you've made a good start with the plaza downstairs, I would encourage you to get people out there and using our local community. And last, as Savlan was talking about, having good workspace, it is very important for the city of Oakland to consider where people are going to live. BART, before the COVID, was at capacity. Everybody is really not gonna be able to come on BART, we're gonna need some people to live locally. So, I would really appreciate if people would consider, really, where is the workforce going to live? Not only the guys up on the 59th floor, but the people who clean and work in these companies at lower rates of pay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is a caller, you're the last for digital, your number are 1488. You may unmute yourself by hitting star six.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
Say your name for the record.
Thank you. Yes, good afternoon, my name is Joe Hornoff, I live at 1770 Broadway, 47 Unit Apartment Building, within 300 feet of this project. I have attended all meetings with freedom benedict. I'm opposed to this project as it is proposed. This tower is enormous, there are a number of issues which warrant further review, there is no need to rush this. I sent you a letter on Monday, I hope you had a chance to read it, 415 20th Street is not a legal address. The address and the signage on this project should read 415 Thomas L. Berkeley Way. I sent you the ordinance which states this clearly. Why do you wish to violate the city ordinance and erase the dignity of a prominent African American who made great contributions to Oakland? Why can't we honor him instead? The 494-page report was less than a week before the meeting, I haven't had sufficient time to process the whole document. Sent you another letter this morning pointing out some initial discrepancies I found in the appendices. Hope you've had a chance to read that. This report has more problems than I had the opportunity to report. I don't think you understand the extreme impact the construction surrounding us has impacted our lives on a day-to-day basis. The noise from the 1900 Broadway Project has directly led to the displacement of at least six people in my building. They were forced to move out. We have filed complaints documenting mining violations, stop work orders have been issued, but the city lacks enforcement to effectively remedy the unhealthy environment that's been created. The noise and the death in this project has been blasting us for over two years, and it looks like we have another two years of disruption ahead of us, from the 1900 project alone. The construction timeline presented when you approved that project has no basis in reality. The impacts upon us have been tremendous, along with the noise, we have streets and sidewalks and bus lanes that are blocked up, a stream of cement trucks which idle under our apartments, and a state of blight which has led to an increase in crime in our neighborhood. People who live across our street are selling their condos and moving out, our neighborhood is a mess. This project does not address its additional impact upon us and future impacts after it is completed. The impact of all this nearby construction needs to be considered as a whole. The cumulative impact of all these projects within 300 feet of our apartments will make us, our apartments even more unhealthy, more unlivable, certainly for the foreseeable future. Most of my neighbors have given up. On their behalf of speaking out again, and perhaps vain hope that you will address some of these issues before you approve yet another enormous project in such close proximity to where we live. This is very stressful for me, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Asada, you may unmute yourself to make your comment.
Yes, the failure to recognize Thomas L. Berkeley Way is insulting. Mr. Berkeley was an African-American lawyer, newspaper publisher, world-class athlete, and was on the Chamber of the Oakland Port Authority. As a matter of fact, he was the first African-American to serve on the port. I don't know why this issue is here, if it's Thomas L. Berkeley Way, recognize it. Secondly, Oakland and San Francisco is the number-one gentrification city in the United States. This project looks like it may be a gentrification builder. I hope that's not the case, but it sure looks like it. The presentation recognized that the corporates' union or unions would be involved. I don't know if the developer is aware, it's not his responsibility or her responsibility, but there is currently a struggle to get the unions to incorporate having African-Americans within the unions. The unions have refused to give the data that supports the disparity that we have recognized exists within the construction sites. I hope that there will be some discussion to not only recognize local residents, but to have inclusion of African-Americans as a part of the workforce around any project. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And next we have, okay, you're labeled as uptown, downtown CBD, and can you state your full name for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Steve Snyder. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm the Executive Director of the Uptown Downtown Community Benefit Districts. The proposed Heinz development falls within the boundaries of our Lake Merritt Uptown District. Though our organization has made it a policy not to support the specifics of any new developments, we do enthusiastically support the general concept of high-density developments being proposed so close to public transportation. In keeping with our organization's long-term vision for Oakland, this project continues the evolution of Oakland as a thriving and desirable 24-severance, live, work, and play environment. As caretakers of the public rights of way, we are firm believers that street-level design is essential for a safe and vibrant public realm. This project, with its proposed ground-level lobby connected to a cafe and outdoor landscape area, will transform and enliven the corner of 20th and Franklin in profoundly positive ways. Currently, it's a surface-level parking lot which does not do much to enhance that corner. Just the street level is of critical importance to our organization, so are community-accessible green space initiatives. This proposed design of this project includes an open-air park and landscape roof observation deck that could potentially be open to the general public. Commercial offices inherently bring more foot traffic to our downtown and are essential to our collective efforts to support our small businesses in the neighborhood. We encourage the Planning Commission to support this project, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. And looks like our next one, one second. And David Lau, you may unmute yourself to make your comment.
Hi, my name is David Lau, I live in Oakland, a Southern Oakland native, born in Harvard, grew up here. Went to public school from K through 12, currently a lecturer. I live in West Oakland, and I, you know, try to go by downtown occasionally. I just wanted to voice that I'm in favor of reusing the space at this intersection, or where the, I believe that's where the old Sears building used to be. I do think that it should be thought out very carefully, especially regarding how it'll support small businesses locally, and also how it would benefit the public and the people who live in Oakland locally. So, I do understand that there are some concerns about... Um, so I, I do understand that there are some concerns about where the people who use office will live. I, I think that's a really big part of my concern as well. Again, I'm not opposed to developing the space. I just think there's still a few open items to be addressed. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. And I don't see any more hands. If that is, uh, David will be the final comment if there are no more.
Okay, okay. Um, if any attendees would like to speak, this is, uh, your final opportunity. Okay, we will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item and move back to the commission. Uh, I see Commissioner Shirozzi has her hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions, um, I think for staff and for the applicants. I guess I'll start with staff. Um, the, the question of jobs housing balance, I think, is, is a pretty important one, but can you, do we have any data on what, like where we're at right now with the number of jobs, uh, compared to our housing numbers?
Right, so that would be a question, we can get back to you with an answer on that. That's not, um, a specific type of analysis that we provide under our planning code for, for projects. Certainly a good question and we'd be happy to get back to you with an answer at a future meeting. I'll invite Laura Kinsky from Strategic.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it goes beyond this project, obviously. Um, I think it's something that'll, for us in particular, I think we're, we're making up for some other surrounding cities in balance, so I'm just curious. Um, my question to the applicant is about the naming, um, the street address. Can you talk a little bit about why it's referred to as 20th Street?
Sure, uh, this is Paul, uh, and you may have heard me in my introductory comments saying that the building at the intersection of Franklin and Thomas L. Berkeley Way, uh, I tried to emphasize that. I think the address is simply a city, uh, uh, identification approach, uh, but we fully embrace the Thomas L. Berkeley Way street name. Uh, have no intention of, uh, using 415 Twain Street as a name and, uh, so we're fully supportive of all the great comments about this incredible, uh, politician and hurdler and person, Thomas L. Berkeley, and, uh, and want to celebrate him.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Shirozzi, do you have any other questions?
Um, I guess just a clarification on that in terms of what you mean by the, it's a city. I guess I just want a little more detail on why it's listed as 20th.
I think the city should respond to that. So the address is listed in our permit tracking system known as Excela as 20th Street. Um, and we don't have the entire history on, on the name change, but, um, we know that the Thomas Berkeley signs are out there, uh, for the streets and we do know that there's an ordinance, have not had a chance to go into great detail on it. Um, you know, I think there's an option here to, um, have the project address as called out on the building, to have the Thomas Berkeley Way, um, address noted on the building. And then if there are questions about why the confusion between 20th Street and Thomas Berkeley Way, I think that would be a question for either Oak Dot or Public Works. So we'll follow up with them and get a response back to you, um, regarding that in the future at the next meeting.
Okay, that's, that's really helpful. Thank you for, for a little bit of clarification on that. Um, and then I guess one final, maybe it's more of a comment. Yeah, it is a comment. I'll hold off.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Shirozzi. Uh, Vice Chair Manas.
Um, maybe John can respond to my earlier question about, um, ground-level pedestrian comfort analysis. Uh, you touched on the, um, the elevated park in terms of the windscreen that you created, um, but I'm just wanted you to help sort of unwind whether there was any issues at the ground level relative to pedestrian comfort levels.
No, 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 we did a pedestrian wind level analysis, uh, and it turned out, uh, that it complied with all criteria for comfort. You, you can appreciate that we want the pedestrian comfort, wind comfort to be under control because, uh, it would be very, very unfortunate if this became a wind tunnel. Um, and, and what we understand is that we're, we're good to go. Uh, there's enough protection from the tower and I can't speak the specifics of where the winds are coming from, but we're, we're under control and there's enough going on there between columns and whatnot to, to mitigate any, uh, any blast-through effects. Thank you.
Okay, um, any additional questions from Commissioners? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did. I realize it is a question. Um, and I think it's a question for staff. I think, you know, uh, thinking about the trade-offs and the, sort of the bigger, again, I, I do think it's a bigger question than this particular development, but, um, in a development of this size and in the region that we are trying to infill, right? We, we, there are climate impacts, there's economic impacts and, um, you know, just livability, uh, a lot of life issues and we want to have development near transit and all these, all these other reasons that we want infill located here. Um, but really, you know, taking it to heart and considering the amount of construction that's happening, um, for the folks that are living there as well as the businesses. I know this has been an issue in the past with street closures and, and sort of blockage of frontage of, uh, buildings during construction. Is there a requirement for, uh, coordination with either DOT or planning with the community members to just sort of clarify what the process is and, uh, whether there's opportunities for mitigation or anything like that during the construction of these facilities?
Right, so this is a question I can provide a partial response to the, um, right here and right now and you don't have to wait two weeks. Uh, the, uh, projects can come in when they come in, right? That's exactly the issue we're up against is we've had, you know, the perfect storm in downtown recently with a number of projects along, um, along 14th Street, uh, all under construction at the same time. And the city administrator has asked us, uh, a, a number of different departments to work together to come up with an approach to manage construction impacts in areas where we foresee, um, another construction perfect storm. So for example, we have a number of projects off of 7th Street at this point and so we've been slowly looking into some sort of strategy or approach. Um, and we, I, I don't believe that the city administrator has landed on a specific approach, but we are definitely looking into some of the ways, um, that could be addressed. And one, one method is to have a, an interdepartmental, a small interdepartmental team who's looking at these areas where we have multiple projects under construction at the same time and making sure that we are coordinating so that, um, some of the, um, you know, for example, some of the, um, encroachment permits, I think that's probably not the right term, but the construction activities that are faced on the street are, um, are faced between projects so you don't have them all happening at the same time. Um, and then making sure that we have coordinated, uh, construction inspections and management. So I know that the city administrator is looking into this and this has been raised as a concern and I know staff is working on this. I've been involved in some of those conversations. So, um, the, the city is working on developing an approach to managing construction of multiple projects in a small area.
Great, thank you. Okay, now I'm really done with questions.
Thank you, appreciate it. Um, uh, does anyone else have any questions for the team? Okay, um, let's move on to the comments. I mean, I'm sorry, to Commissioners' comments and I'm gonna start, uh, I might have to drop off in a few minutes, but, you know, um, this, this whole discussion about Thomas Berkeley Way, I mean, I've grown and raised in Oakland and I recognize it as Thomas Berkeley Way, but I often too refer to it as 20th Street. So, uh, you know, it's, I think it is important to, to recognize and memorialize, you know, this Oakland leader and, uh, I appreciate Gene Hazard actually bringing it up to our, bringing it to our attention at a DRC meeting at Oakland Heritage Alliance echoing that along with several commenters, but I think that that is an important discussion, um, you know, that we need to, we need to have.
I'm sorry, before continuing the conversation, the discussion, just to be clear, Commissioner Chair, sorry, Chair Lamone, do you intend to leave at this time so that we can announce, um, that, uh, Commissioner Manas as Vice Chair will be, um, taking over Chair of the meeting?
Yes, uh, yes, so I'll pass that on to Vice Chair Manas to complete the meeting as Chair.
Excellent, and we continue to have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, and, um, one of the benefits of attending DRC is we get to, you know, vet these projects and, you know, this has been, uh, this project has definitely raised a lot of issues for us, but it, you know, the project team was able to address all of them and, and work with us in a, in a very cohesive manner. So appreciate, um, appreciate the project team. And also the architect, um, you know, uh, they have landmark, they have a landmark portfolio of projects throughout the world and this will definitely be an important project for Oakland skyline. So, uh, you know, I'm in full support. I probably won't be here for the vote, but thank you, uh, to the staff and project team. So Chair, Vice Chair Manas.
Do you, do you want me to, you don't want me to come in here? You just want to go in on the horn? What do you want to do? I, I, I'll, I'll chair now here. Okay, you'll disappear. Terrific. Thank you, Chair Lamone. Um, so let, let me go through the comments from the fellow Commissioners, um, Commissioner Malchamp.
Um, thanks. Yeah, so, um, it is a very tall building. Um, I think it is architecturally really interesting. I think DRC did a good job on refining the building. Um, it, I think someone said it looks like it's longingly looking at San Francisco. Um, I think we had a meeting about the West Oakland Bart Station where I think I said something like, I wish it was taller. Um, this is definitely taller. Um, it is similarly on top of Bart. Um, and I think, given our world at large, I recognize that inviting more office users into our city creates a demand for housing, um, and that I recognize that pre-pandemic Bart was definitely being utilized. Um, not necessarily bringing a lot of people to Oakland for, not necessarily bringing as many people to Oakland for jobs as it has been to San Francisco. So I do think that in our overall jobs housing balance and needing jobs in downtown Oakland, especially to bring daytime and people going for lunches and, um, I don't know, I don't think we have a cafeteria ordinance. Um, I think it would be interesting to have that problem such that we had a cafeteria ordinance. Um, that is all a, we'll see with the pandemic, right? Um, but I hear the community's concern about those issues. Um, I think that it is very interesting that in our current state of the world, people are doubling down in the building office in Oakland and it's helpful, um, if nothing else, in our current times to see someone wanting to do this. So, um, I think it's a beautiful building. It is very tall, um, but given its location, um, I think it's appropriate. And I, I think instead of looking longingly at San Francisco, it's like, hey, hey, I'm cooler over here in Oakland. Um, so that's how I view the, uh, the view to, to San Francisco. Um, I do agree on the name and I do think that is something that should be addressed, um, for sure. Um, and I do recognize that the construction is a lot for that neighborhood to bear. Um, change is difficult and having a lot of projects happen at once is difficult. I think noted that that's being addressed. Um, I think that's not just this neighborhood that's having that happen. Um, so I do think it'd be good to figure out a policy. Um, and then the open space and having it be, um, exclusive, I, I get that there's a, I don't know how much that's going to be used for people going up and taking a real walk on top of a podium, but, um, it's a cool use of the space and it's, it's better than having just concrete. So I think it's, I think it's great. I don't think it, I don't think a lot of people are gonna go for a long walk up there without first popping down to get their coffee. So, um, yeah, those are, those are broad, general comments and opinion, but, um, I'm excited that someone wants to build office in Oakland right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Malchamp. Commissioner? Commissioner Higday with us? Can't hear you.
It's not muted. There we go.
Not muted.
No? Commissioner Higday? We're not hearing you, but it doesn't indicate you're muted. Now we can.
Now we, now we hear you.
Oh, sorry. Okay, um, yeah, I have, I feel very overwhelmed by this, uh, building. Uh, I, yeah, uh, you know, I will leave it to the market to decide whether, uh, Oakland can use this kind of office building. Um, but I, I am generally like overwhelmed by this. Um, and I, I have a lot of, uh, sympathy and empathy for folks who are in the downtown area living through all the construction. As someone who used to live in the downtown area, um, I, I lived there before this construction boom, so, um, I missed this. Uh, yeah, I, I think as, in terms of the attractiveness of the building, it's there, but I, it is really tall. I feel overwhelmed.
Thank you, Commissioner Higday. Commissioner Shirozzi?
Okay, sorry, I was having trouble with mute.
No problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that some of the issues that have been brought up, I do, I will just start by saying I do think that the naming issue needs to be resolved, whether it's on the city side or on the applicant's side. I, I, I don't think it's something we want to put off. I think it's quite important. Um, but, uh, outside of that, I think, you know, normally I would complain that there's parking above a Bart Station, but I think that because it's an office and retail location and they've done a really good job of hiding the parking and incorporating it, not using additional land for it, um, I'm, I'm good with that. Uh, I do think it's a really nice-looking building. Yes, it's huge. It's a downtown of a city. Um, I think part of the reason that, you know, Bart is so crowded in the mornings is because people are leaving the city to go to work and, uh, if we can keep them in the city to work, that's great. Uh, that, that means, um, less commuting. It means more dollars spent in Oakland and more sales tax revenue and more businesses supported. Um, I agree in general. I think that our jobs and housing balance is probably a little swayed the other way and, and like I said, I think we're probably making up for some of the imbalance in other cities, but I am really curious just to see if we can find out more on that. Um, but that's mostly because I'm a nerd. Um, and then I do, I do think that the, the issue around construction and sort of the impacts to the community, uh, like Commissioner Malchamp said, are not, not just in this area. It's all over because, uh, and, and really not just Oakland. Every city is changing. Uh, you know, we're growing in population. People are moving into urban areas. Uh, so we need to figure something out around that. Um, and I'm glad to hear that the city is working on it and trying to mitigate some of those impacts. Um, I know that doesn't necessarily help the people that live in these neighborhoods right now. Uh, so I'm hopeful that we can move quickly and, and sort of maybe even phase it. So there's some sort of thought around that for the developers and construction workers as we're starting to grow more and more, especially post-COVID. Um, but yeah, I think it's a beautiful-looking building. I mean, yes, it's tall, um, but I, I think it looks great.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray Lynch?
Please, there's some of the comments on the Planning Commission.
As someone who was literally brought here by, uh, Thomas Berkeley, uh, he's the reason I came to Oakland. He brought me here. I, I definitely would like to see his name on there. Um, and, um, I think obviously that was 20th Street at one time, so I'm sure it's just a changeover in, uh, with his name being added, uh, as the, as a new street name from 20th Street. For the building itself, I, it boxy to me. Um, but I like the, the details that were put together in the building. The, the, the lower level, the piazza level, uh, the, uh, middle level and the top. I think those are very great additions. I think those are very great additions to the skyline and to buildings like this in order to make them, A, more user friendly, and also more friendly for the people in the building. Because yes, the, you know, you do want, I heard someone talk about, you want people to get out and walk on the street. But when you're working in an office building, to be able to just actually stay in the building, take a 10-minute walk, and then get back in is very convenient. So there's some nice, there's some nice touches here. And to have all those levels be accessible to the public, I think, is an outstanding development that the developers put together here. So overall, I think the building works. The height doesn't bother me. I think it's about time that we started to have some larger buildings here. And I think in terms of the housing, we have so much housing being built all over downtown and throughout the city that I think there'll be ample housing for, as this building begins to lease up and people who are in this building start looking for housing. Because one of the concerns I was having was whether or not we're gonna have too much housing and nobody able to actually qualify to move into the housing. So I think that's gonna be an advantage, quite frankly, to have the housing that we have. And then to have this building kind of behind it so that people have a place to go. So I, I like the project as overall. And I think if we could get more of these, we could make this truly a city that is on the move as it is right now. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Fern.
Yeah, tough to add to, you know, I'll just kind of echo, you know, some of the things the fellow commissioners say. I'll add to the chorus around the name change. I think obviously the city needs to look into their Excela program as well to assure that that gets changed. But it seems like we're all in agreement about that. You know, I too appreciate the moves that the developer made related to the DRC comments. I think that the public spaces are unique. I think it's not something you see in office buildings opening themselves up to the public. And so I want to encourage that, I think with what could happen at the Kaiser complex across the street, you do have this kind of collection of privately owned, publicly accessible open space that could really be cool. And I think that, you know, the building being broken apart with the open space in the mid-level, something you don't see every day as well. So appreciate that gesture. And, you know, I don't also have a problem with the height. I mean, we're right in the middle of downtown, we're right downtown Oakland, which is a city in and of itself. I think it could have, you know, quality landmark buildings, of which, you know, I think this could become one. And I believe that, you know, in our overall jobs housing imbalance, I certainly can't look at it on a parcel-by-parcel basis. You have to look at it from a regional basis. And, you know, I also believe that there are opportunities to better utilize Bart going in both directions instead of being a commuter rail into San Francisco and ideally, and hopefully, Bart in the near term and in intermediate term will also have additional capacity to run as well without getting into cars. But overall, I support the project and the moves that were made.
Thank you very much. So let me add my final or my comments to my fellow commissioners. I agree with the substance of what my fellow commissioners have shared, and I think it's really important. I know the project sponsor will continue to pay attention to this. One of the things that I wanted to sort of make note of that was in Rebecca's staff report, which really sort of was an affirmation for me, was the description of our continued evolution of emerging compact urban center in downtown. I think that's a very important thing. And the second part of that, I would say, is that Heinz, who is a global leader in projects all across the world in terms of quality projects, it's a very good sign that their stature is one that they're committed to being a part of this Oakland continued evolution as a city. And I think the design for me is a reflection of that. It is a very elegant and modern expression with a lot of detail. I was looking at those aerial shots, and I would have to sort of make a comment that in comparison to some of the other projects that we've seen around that area, the project actually aspires to a much higher level of finesse and design refinement that I would sort of say is a very, very good sign for Oakland in terms of attracting projects that have that caliber of scale and refinement that we all sort of feel that this is characteristic of the city. And with that, again, I want to say that I think the project has gone through design review. I think the project sponsor and the architect were responsive and did hear the comments that we have, have tried in every way to try and respond to issues that my fellow commissioners have identified. I think ones that are on their minds as well, and they will continue to refine the project as it moves forward. So with that, do we have a motion on this item?
Chair Manus, I'll do what you typically are, are motioners. I'll go ahead and take your place. But I'll move to the staff's environmental determination and to approve the design review, conditional use permit, and variances of a maximum setback standard subject to the attached findings and conditions.
And apologies through the chair. Did you want to add the part about conditioning the project on including the Thomas Berkeley address?
Yes.
I am accepted.
A second.
Okay, so first by Commissioner Fern and second by Commissioner Ray Lynch. And what was the addition? I missed that.
The address.
The address regarding Thomas L. Berkeley Way.
That is, okay. Well, I'll follow the rules. Commissioner Monchamp?
Yes.
Commissioner Hagde?
I understand.
Commissioner Shirovsky?
Yes.
And Commissioner Ray Lynch?
Yes.
Commissioner Fern?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Manus?
Yes.
Motion passes with five votes to approve and one abstention. This decision is appealable to City Council within 10 days.
Wonderful. Thank you very much on this item. So Secretary Payne, we have an approval of the minutes of April 7th, I believe?
Yes, and let's take a look at the agenda, make sure we've gone through every item. Typically, the next section of your agenda would be appeals. However, there are no appeals this evening. And then moving on to commissioner business, you do have one set of minutes, and that would be for the April 7th, 2021 meeting. And does Mona, could you tell us who can vote on that?
Yes. Can you hear me? Yes. Sorry, I was in school.
I left the meeting, but I have the first portion of the votes that are captured, five to one. My comment basically is that, under normal circumstances, I would be in favor of a project like this. But those circumstances passed 10 years ago, or started to. And then with the pandemic, what would have taken another five years to unfold was thrust upon us. And that is that people are working out of their homes, and they're not commuting. And yet, when office pressures are brought to a city like Oakland, where you say you're going to have 864,000 square feet of office space, nothing else but office space, that tells me that there's going to be pressures on housing that will continue to lead to our homeless problem. Unlike the other people there, I come from a background where I worked for a redevelopment agency. We used tax increment financing to raise enough money to build affordable house. We had an affordable housing industrial complex. That's gone. Even though there are people who believe that the level of housing that's going up around the city is, you know, tremendous, if you just take a look back at what we did when we had redevelopment, what's going on now pales in comparison to what we had then. If we maintained redevelopment, we would not have a homeless problem. But we do because we don't have this 20% set aside annually to finance and build affordable housing. That's gone. So Oakland has left itself to a market that is systemically racist. And yet, the planning commission seems to act like that's not a problem. It's mind-boggling what I saw, but there it is. Subscribe to Zenny62 and bookmark OaklandNewsNow.com. I favor the project with live work. And with Thomas Berkeley's name on it, which was fixable. I felt, I felt, I felt, feel. The biggest problem still is the scale and scope of this project and how it's going to impact socio-economically Oakland from that place. The planning commission seemed fearful even discussed that.